Hi, gentlemen.
If it begins the in-person special meetings of the board of education, it's Monday, May nineteenth, and it is six thirty-six. In attendance, we have, I'm just for us, we have Albert Benninghan, Joseph Kalavich, and Lina Dina, Britta Escher, Mary Menace, Andrew Woodson, Dr. Avery, in person, and online, we have Akeisha Casimir, Rob Traver, and we're joined by Nick and Jody.
Jody.
Well, you know what is, I always forget your name, their last name, your last name, so I was like, I'm not gonna say Nick's last name.
So Joey Baldwin.
Cool, I guess.
But we typically stop at the ninety-nine restaurant on our way up here since one of all for that.
We'll be honest.
Yeah, I'll only do that. Let's, I'll step off from McDonald's, which is what we did the first time. At the office, they're not calling me a date, right? I've been there with him more than I do my wife. So.
Well, yeah, same.
Remember we're large.
I know. So we're gonna go over the fifth full, uh, full word training, um, and it's, uh, refining our board's goals, so I'll give it over to you.
Okay, so, um, actually, we'll get to that in a second. What I thought I'd just start is, um, Jody and I talked about this. We like to start with just kind of a, a, a status check. Um, you know, we have some feelings about where we've seen progress made and all that, but it's really important to hear what you have to say. Um, so open-ended question, um, how are you feeling about where you are right now? Both in regards to the training, which are, um, you know, we all know why we're here, and in terms of have you seen some progress? How do you feel about where we've all stepped along? I'm leaving that open, and I don't want to do any, we don't want to talk, we want to hear. So definitely. And forgive me, um, someone else is gonna have to point out for Akeisha or Robert, if you guys raise your hand, somebody's gonna have to find out for us, because my back's turned to you, and I apologize for that.
Uh, Mr. Mary Menace. Um, I think we've created efficiencies, especially in the board meetings. Um, a very notable example is how the policies of, I think, two weeks ago, we ran through maybe like close to ten policies within like thirty minutes, and you got the most of them. Um, so I think we're definitely seeing some efficiencies coming from the screening.
I can say I'm learning a lot. I be as bold as I can turn, I learn more than I want to start in the beginning, you know, five years back. And I having that I'm ready, of course, not ready, but I'm saying I'm ready to, whatever's going on, whatever's happened, you know, communicate, you know, work with that very, very well, you know, it's open communication is much better. I feel the board working much better, you know, to respect the communication, you know, and I'm learning, I'm learning, I feel so good, and I'm really proud, thank you guys for here, I'm very, you know, I appreciate that, we technically, we need it, I need it, so I'm glad for it.
Yeah, it's a little bit hard to separate what was happening anyway, change of leadership to what we're gaining from this, but it does, it does have a lot of value for the community, because the community is seeing, this is what we should have been doing all along, that the roles and roles and of each superintendent and the board, that we are in charge of a budget that was not clear before to maybe some of the board and some of the communities being put there, picking on somebody when we worry, when we're only actually trying to do our jobs and carry out our rules. And, and it shows, and we're getting a lot out of this, and the board has calmed down a lot, but that's also because everybody has a chance to speak, which was happening anyway, and a lot of this stuff was happening anyway, and a lot of the state's critiques are kind of a stretch to find something of what, what isn't happening now. The good day is coming, the digging up a lot of, um, administrative inefficiencies that we haven't been privy to as a board, which is very, which is gonna be very helpful in the future going forward. Now we know where to look in certain departments and what had reports.
Great problems and great problems.
Yeah, no, 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 it's not reflecting on you guys.
No, no. It really provides a wave of, of, of the good things that are happening.
And the timing's gonna be better for you guys, and then you guys would have come at this point last year.
I was here at this point last year.
Yeah, but you guys, as far as the action that you guys are doing, you know, I know you guys, you welcomed it from the day one that I mentioned. This is only my second year, they were, it was very clear that you were willing and able and, and okay, open door for you guys to come in and do more training. No one took you up in that thing to that old, old leadership though. You know, I appreciate your presence, I think I've, you know, I'm the Bible man, so you, I'll read Ja- John chapter ten this week and read it nine months from now, and I'll get something else out of it. So every training for me, I can always learn something new. Some of the things I've known before and I've learned before, um, and some of the work that we were doing before you guys came, some of this work we were starting to do amongst ourselves. So it kind of like just speeded it up with us, so I appreciate you guys, um, you know, I, I couldn't say more kudos to our, our board chair, um, you know, she's been side by side with us and with her. We've had wonderful conversations with other board members that we didn't have last year, so it's been, it's been a plus all around because of the new leadership that we had, so, uh, but you guys definitely pushed us up the hill and not.
Right, last thing we just showed.
Yes, sir. Yeah, but I, I just want to point out, last year, this live stream cost us an extra forty-five minutes, and this year, you just said, oh, you live streaming, Joe, and I'm sure we're gonna move on.
Online, do you have any questions or any comments?
Favorite?
Go.
Is Casimir?
Add me.
I'm sorry, yes, I heard somebody say my name, I, I apologize.
If you have any comments, you can share.
I don't, I don't have any comments at all, thank you.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Um, I, I, I want to agree that there is like efficiencies that we're working on, and while, um, there are, I think we still have a long way to go in terms of that, um, well, we have some things set in place for the next few months to hopefully get us there, um, and we'll see tonight with even with the, um, recommended change or provisions to our, our board goals and kind of speed things up for us, things that we're planning to do anyways, um. I do think that we'll see what happens. Still, I'm still hoping that no matter what we're doing in the training, it continues. Um, there, there are still some concerns I have with, um, roles and responsibilities, for instance. Um, I think that's something we'll have to revisit a few times, we'll, we'll have to revisit, um, and I know I talked to you about that, Nick, and that up in future after these trainings, um, and, and this not gonna, I, I don't think this is something that after six training, we can, we, we should, and my thing, I think, we, I think Nick and Jody can, can come back in and continue working with us, not necessarily as a mandate mistake, but as a, for the board, to kind of continue guiding us and making sure we're efficient. Yeah.
Um, I, I, I want to just change one word, because efficient is a word I don't appreciate a whole lot, effective is a better word. Um, just in terms, because efficiently, you got a little early tonight, effective in my mind is when we're doing, it's a difference. And I see, we're ready for that. I see this board really starting to think about how can we do this more effectively. Um, when the state intervened in Wyndham, New London, they, on a wider level intervened in, um, Norwalk, they required those districts to, um, they gave Wyndham and Winchester and London special master, but they also required them to go through light-off training. And that was two years of very intense training that we did for them through the state. Um, it's not something that we have plans to do, because it's very expensive, the state funded those, because we had a team of about five different consultants that we worked with, and again, two full years every other month, so it was a huge commitment, but it made a difference. So all I can say is that if we decide to spend three, four times a year, however much time you can spend us, um, we could find a whole lot of ways to help to give you more effective, so we're committed to do that. But one thing we may have to talk about at some point is, um, we do all of our field service work, and most of our field service work is part of your membership, if it starts to get really intense, we may want to go to the state, see if they'll help support some of that. Um, I goes then for it, we're gonna do our very best to continue to provide everything we need. And the only thing I would add, and it's just going to your point, Jennifer, that, that and come, coming at this as a person who is a superintendent, I feel like we're a voice of position, um, it's always important, no matter what we're talking about, to always look at it from the perspective of roles and responsibilities. So it's not like you're gonna get a roles and responsibilities workshop, and then figure out how that's all gonna work together, but everything with, with it has to do with board decorum and buying, what is, budget, um, anything related to staffing, it's all gonna be looked at through the lens of what is the superintendent supposed to do? What is the board supposed to do? When is superintendent laid back and be supportive? When's the board, and, and take, and when's the board take charge? And when's the board lend, lend support for the superintendent, and to make sure that, that, that conversation is always being addressed. And sometimes, in a way, even during a board meeting, you know, when something occurs to, to be able to go back and say safely that, let's go, let's look at our roles and responsibilities training, first responsibilities if you address this issue as it comes up, deal with it when it comes up at any given time. That's really critical. And we can dig deeper than, as, as you as a board decide, you know, maybe we'd like to do a little more in this area.
And I know for me, I think, I, I think the, the openness to, to try to figure out a new game plan has been, you know, kind of refreshing for me, I mean, because I wa- I, I watched from the outside in, in one year, and now that I'm in the role, now I have to take a different lens of it. So I think with you guys being here, the state's being here, I think everybody is trying, is have sit back and, and try, okay, let's try to do this differently, and let's figure out a better way to do it collectively, and I think I've seen a little bit of that, though there's a lot more of that that, that's needed. Uh, um, I did have a chance to peek through some of the recommendations from the state, and for me, that's what superintendent and boards aren't supposed to do anyway. What we're getting already to lay out, that's what I'm experienced with doing, and it's, it's a very joyful opportunity, because you see kids progressing, and not about the adults, but it's what are we doing the work in order to impact the learning of kids? And so when you start doing that collectively, because that's what the job of superintendent is, is to, how do we improve instructional capacity building within our district to impact kids, right? The day-to-day operational pieces is where we go together between the, and the board to make the system function, right? But when you don't see that, then you don't see the combination of it all flowing together to work in combination to impact kids. Uh, because we haven't impacted kids in a long time in this district, to get a kid up, and so we, we gotta see gains academically, but if the system isn't built to build, to build along gains, you're never gonna get there. So that's what we have to do together, and that's the hardest part.
It shows a shiny object, so I always like that, again, my goal is superintendent wants to keep the board away from railing at those shiny objects and to stick with the hard work. And again, there are a lot of boards and superintendents that, that prefer the drop, it's easier. You know, it's more, it's more entertaining, more engaging, there are winners, there are losers, and we're right in it, and we, we create our own methodologies around it. But in, in, in the the, the, the tough work is tough, and it requires you to focus on just keeping all the fun that, and focusing on, it's got a budget, uh, let's make sure it's, it's a budget that supports the needs of kids, let's add that battle, let's fire that, let's, let's look at a vibe, let's make sure that you have everything in place to, to do what we need to do, that's fire. Thank you for that. Um, if we may revisit this down road sometime, we see if, if we've seen any long-term changes, because really, right now, we're looking for your reaction to things that have just happened, but to actually ask in six months, you know, did it make a difference? I think it'd be an interesting question to ask, have you pondered? Um, so we have two kind of plans for this evening. The first one, we figured originally it might take a couple hours, and naturally it will anymore, um, competitive performance goals, which, um, we've seen copies of, and you have set in front of you as well. And then we developed a little worksheet for even those goals, which would talk about, um, what are some of the strategies with each of those strategies? What would your timeline be? What would the board's goal be, and the superintendent's goal be, and what evidence of completion? Frankly, the report that the state sent today, at least I got it today, are copied, they make recommendations of, of things they would like to see, and frankly, there's so much overlap that we might want to start with what they recommend, and then, but I want to also say, if there's anything else that this board feels should also, because they're making like, these are things minimum standards, but I've heard you all talk more and more about we want it to be better, we may find that there may be a couple areas that you want to have further conversation about, maybe set a couple extra goals, but, um, in my mind, I think if we start with goal one, talk about, um, what the expectation was, let's look at the state language, does that fulfill your need? Or do you also want to continue to have a further conversation about that? So if that makes sense. Uh, first goal wants to establish district vision for improvement in the Bridgeport Public Schools. Um, originally, there was a discussion of the board would set some short-term goals, and then, um, leading up to, after a superintendent is chosen to go into a long-term strategic plan. What the state recommended, um, by August first, twenty twenty-five, and prior to developing a district vision for improvement, the board will develop and distribute community surveys and host at least four community forums at separate geographic locations across the city, facilitated by the board chair or an outside facilitator external to the district to gather input for the design of the vision for improvement. You actually can stand.
Gotcha.
Yeah, because we, we went through this with, um, the other group, the national group, that is the board's responsibility to drive this. We, we come up with the questions for the survey for the community, correct?
I'm seeing if the board can develop and disrupt.
And we could do, and we could get input from superintendent, but it's a board-driven goals and objective that we have to, um, to develop this.
Yes.
What does that come from the superintendent?
Well, of course, I could see this as a collaborative.
Right, right, and, and, and as do I, but, um, we, we are the ones that gotta go out into the community, we are the ones that gotta knock the door in, we are the ones that are, basically, just like the budget, it's a collaborative effort, but it's ours, it basically ends up in our wheelhouse.
Yeah, that's what, it's very, it's the board.
Yeah, no, no, just to be a clarifier, because a lot of times, you'll see in these documents, they use the board and Bridgeport Public Schools interchangeably. And it gets a lot of confusion between board members, the public, and even different administrations that I've been through, they conflate all three. E, e, when they talk about the Board of Education, sometimes they talk about superintendent, when they talk about the Board of Education, sometimes they're talking about the board. Sometimes when they talk about Bridgeport Public Schools, they're talking about the board's actions. So, so it, it, it's all, so it pays to have that clarity of, um, language and purpose, especially now in a position where it's a way of clear on the role, especially if we're developing roles and responsibilities to realize that the language is intentional when it says board, especially when it comes to state statutes and such like that, in the media and colloquial, it's used interchangeably.
I think that's a point well taken, I know that, in an obvious example, would be budget process. The superintendent develops his budget, he develops it with his team, he gets input from the board, presents it to the, to the full board as a, as a, as a budget. The board, the board looks at it, they don't, they might ask some clarifying questions, just so they understand it, but then they, 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 then convenes to, my view, to the finance committee with the superintendent, so you go over optical by optical, and you figure it out, and then you vote it out of the finance committee to the full board again, when the full board has a chance to take the superintendent's budget, now it's gonna be the board's budget, and so the board then sells it, so the superintendent sells it to you, works with you, so he goes from the leadership to the support when it becomes the board's death and budget.
And you, you leave it on a partner, this board doesn't place it out here, the board shall discuss it, possibly amend it, and then it becomes the board's budget.
Yeah.
Like, you, you skipped, you skipped a whole board, absolutely.
Well.
Which is important. It's a process.
So, and, well, and to your point there, I mean, it says you shall develop, uh, surveys, there's really no discussion here about who's going to see that that's, that is taking place, who's gonna put the questions together, so there is a little bit of work in identifying who's gonna do what. Um, and the, the other part I would say is, in terms of the community forums, um, who's gonna, typically something like that, you're gonna have some questions and ask people to respond. Um, I think that, while Joe, you're absolutely right that it's the board vision, the, the board that votes on the vision, um, without input from superintendent, and most important, his staff, how do you figure out where we're gonna go if we're not even sure where we are right now?
Kind of centenary. And I'm starting, problem question, these, these definitely gotta be publicly noticed, because they're, they're gonna be board meetings, unlike the superintendent's forums where we just showed up and it was this superintendent running it, this is more of a board-led thing, so it has to be publicly noticed and.
Right, these are community meetings, you want to have them noticed, posted. I just facilitated two for Wallingford, where they had a, um, special, they, they're talking about closing one of their two high schools and consolidating the one from two, and there's a lot of anxiety in the community about that, so they have two forums, this was just on the EdSpecs, so they're building, by the way, this wasn't even a decision, that has, they rightly, it was been made two years ago. Um, but they wanted to make sure that the community felt that, so they were board meetings, the board sat like this, they had microphones, they invited people to come up and share their thoughts on the edge stats, several of them wanted to watch in high schools. Um, and they asked me to facilitate that, just to keep that, so the board could stay, um, you know, listening, and so that was a similar situation, but somebody had to post the questions and get that to respond.
And would you suggest a, a more interactive forum, or just a list, more of a listening type?
Um, the problem with interactive is, is that it's interactive. And, and, and I say this with a lot of affection, I see a board where members like to talk more to the community than to listen to the community. So I think it would be really important to make this about listening to them. You could then come together after your forums and meet together and say, what did we get out of this? So what does this mean for the Bridgeport Public Schools? But this is a chance to hear from them. So I would say more of one person speaking at a time, plus if you break up into smaller groups, who's reporting all of this information? Only three of you might hear it instead of all of you, so that would be my idea of just, it's a pub, community forum, but you can say, we have some questions, first question is followed up, and then, so, so. And you have time, I, I, I guess my question would be, who's gonna be responsible for putting these surveys together and then distributing it with a timeline of August first? Um, it doesn't say to collect them, but it says you have to distribute them by August first, so, um, that's a couple of months. Um, I'm gonna suggest that probably because of the convenience of having staff to do it, that the superintendent would be the one to pull it together, but how do we get the questions for, um?
That'd probably be another meeting, we'd probably stop again, and go ahead.
Well, I, 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 I don't want to dominate, no, no, just, uh, just suggestions how we handle a lot of things, is, um, don't necessarily take another meeting, we could all send individual questions to the superintendent, and we'll see. He'll, he'll find some, we may be able to find some overlapping questions and commonalities, and may some, maybe some unique questions, and he could probably pull that all together, not trying to get, get responsibilities, but it's probably a more sufficient way to go about it, and then add a few of his own, because especially with the tight timeline.
So we, so, and, and again, your point is, well, taking anybody's concern, Dr. Avery, questions they think should be on it, um, there are examples of community surveys, but again, this is to help you develop a vision, so I think it's some, actually, about open-ended questions, what do you think we need to focus on, where, where are the concerns we have right now with Bridgeport Public School, ought to be in better, et cetera. You might also look at the thought exchange as a powerful tool, so I know you're using it in the second, but using it at the first iteration and getting input from your community, to then allow these meetings that you have with the community to test those ideas out. So, so to get through the thought exchange process, you're gonna identify maybe thirty or forty different ideas, but you'll also get a chance to see which ones get the most stars and which ones really runs to the top. You'll be able to, instead of just going to these community meetings and just saying, what do you guys think about our vision? You can ask them specific questions about what came back from thought exchange, how do you feel about this? This was one of the most highly rated thoughts regarding our vision, what are your thoughts on that? So you can, so they can find your process.
I know us, we can do a survey, we can make, you know, questions, you know, something that, and we can look, I would love to just, and I would like to hear from people on our side. People outside of the parent, staff, principals, because they are not maybe saying that we, you know, they, they know we're gonna do a survey, we know what we want, but we know what we're gonna say, or what we're gonna ask, but I'd like to hear the people, when it's outside, teachers, parents, you know, staff, principals, you know, they can not go crazy, I know they're gonna, people are gonna go crazy, but we can take which one, you know, it's more important, we want to save another other one, you know, then send it to the chair of, of Dr. Avery, so for me, it's valued, people from outside for me.
So you're thinking you're going to get questions, that then you're gonna ask of the.
And then they can send it, you know, us, you know, whatever, to Dr. Avery, and we can figure out what question would be good, so we can be ready to do this form, you know.
And I'm, I'm only pushing back a little bit, because part of me likes that, but you're on a short timeline, and you want the survey out longer, and if you have too long a process to even develop the survey, then that's gonna cut short the time to get results, and I, I think I, I guess I'd like to leave it to you to some extent to try to figure out, and, and again, logistically, Dr. Avery's in the best position to say, well, I could have staff pull this together by weeks of, you know, week, month, whatever, in order to get it going. Um, so I, I don't, I don't know that you want the board managing the process as much as making sure that the questions are appropriate.
Exactly, I know, sorry, I know parents, when they see surveys long, they're not, because I have experience in, I, I know that this goes to the survey, they go to the point, okay, what they want, and you know, we, we, exactly, we, we know what we want, what they want, especially today, you know, I feel, so it's time to go to short, strong, short survey, you know, to the point, you know, not too many, because they're gonna get worried, because it is too much.
Nine questions.
Exactly.
With a lid down, so. A few, but my, my again, I guess, just, um, thinking like the survey should be out longer than I was like, or I was all the, um, put it out there for, and hopefully, maybe, um, if we can develop our questions by the end of this month, and you can hopefully put a survey out by first, technically, the latest of June, and then, um, possibly do, uh, the forums throughout the summer in July.
You know. You know. Possible suggestion for you, because, um, I think beginning of June is doable for a draft.
Yeah.
On June second, we're gonna have a communications expert here to talk to you about communicating with the community. So if we could get him a copy of the draft questions ahead of time, he could also help you respond to that and find two that you can care, so and get Chris from, get involved in that meeting.
This is really, yeah, maybe in summer meetings, we can, it's really big, because on the forums.
Yeah.
Um, and I, you know, it helps that there'll be four, we can spread it out that way, obviously, sometimes it's heavily off and whatnot, we can, some of the, some of the board can get, you know, some of the, you know, meetings, this and that.
Especially the way, too, on the superintendent, because he, he's gonna want to be there, I'm sure, and, um, he's gotta be in every meeting.
So we'll have to, we'll figure that out.
We're through that. The other thing, too, is thinking about meeting with your community, or if you want to go to the thought exchange group, call the conscious coming up, and if your accidentally, your family's coming to your schools, and maybe able to integrate or, or figure out a way of using those opportunities as ways to get information from parents when they're coming to your schools.
Yeah. And yes, you know, Joe.
No. Yeah, I just thought the support, I would, it's the Benninghan idea, because I, I, I do like it, and I do appreciate the timeline thing, but we could always circle back, there's nothing locking us into this one survey. In the beginning, we could circle back and gain the information that we get from the public at the community forums, and put together another survey afterwards, or.
This is just the vision, just, you know, there's any time we're gonna get into the goals and that can be additional.
Yeah, because this is gonna, this is gonna be all gonna work, it's not just this year, so, we're gonna, we're gonna win.
Supposedly, it's home for additional work. The other thing that is supposed to be forthcoming, um, in talking to, um, Charlie Hughes at the state, they did a bunch of surveys of your community, and those results are supposed to be available soon. Now, I asked him if it would be available to our consultant, because he, he knows communication, and it would be helpful for him to. Now, I asked him if it would be available to our consultant because he he knows communication and it would be helpful for him to see those survey results. They promised that if they're available, he will get them and I'm assuming that everyone will get them. So there may be some something in those comments. Um, from all the surveys they've done, that might also trigger some ideas for you. So.
This survey that we're talking about is in regard to. What exactly? We're gonna be surveying who for what?
Oh, do you have the document in front of you? The the. It should be on the portal. Uh, this is an email I sent earlier. It's the um.
Looks like this.
I I was at the doctor this afternoon.
Yes, just check your email. There's a, there's a.
The highlights from last.
Email from me this morning or early afternoon. From uh the state on the goals and that that's what we're looking at now. But to answer your question, it's um, they they sent back um. What do you call it? Revisions or feedback, feedback on our goals. And uh one of them was to have a community forums this summer. To help establish our vision.
Okay, this is not the, this is not the uh facility stuff. This is the a different purpose.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I just, I just wondered the little worksheet that happened here. If we look at that first one and it's one established the survey. Survey August first is the timeline. Board's role is to make sure that the questions, to finalize the questions. Superintendent's role is really to organize this process. And the evidence of completion would be the survey results. Actually, if I'm missing anything, but. Thinking I I would look at the board, the State Department of Ed, maybe maybe I've been rehearsed this long, so you can judge like this is wrong. So this is an opportunity for the State Department of Ed to just. Or or should it pin pin things down a bit? So like by August first, twenty twenty five, you're saying, you're committed to a date. You're committed to a process. You're committed to a number of meetings. Again, I I think if you made a strong justification for changing into this, but still paying yourselves down. I don't see this necessarily as being static percent. I think you can definitely add to it. Change things around a little bit to meet your needs. But this is really, in my view, if this would feedback, I would always add in, oh, you won't pay it down. And they're gonna say yes to that. The only question that we don't have an answer to, or a question that we don't have an answer to is, do they mean August first is like, this is a drop dead date that. If certain things aren't done by then, we're gonna make other decisions. Or is this just, it's an appropriate timeline? Um, and and as I say, the way I read the question, um by August first, you will just develop and distribute. I'm not sure that it necessarily, and and of the community forums, but it doesn't necessarily say that, well, collected the data and reported back. So. Yeah, I would say the hard part is getting it organized and sent out. You might be able to allow a week or two for returns and then.
Yeah, I was actually gonna comment on that because that's just to have the forums, just to have the surveys, but we'll actually have to have a sit down workshop or meeting on. Actually just developing the vision based on the results. So that would probably, you know, be later in the month of August.
Yeah, um, and they didn't pin that to you anywhere in terms of the dates of established vision. Um, and I I guess to, in my mind, I'm not sure where they are with that because. As we've talked about before, to go into a full blown strategic plan, for example, prior to finalizing superintendent search. It's kind of something because you put that person's input um to be part of that. So I'm not sure. That's why I haven't heard them say must have a plan by such and such. They just say you'll have quick data collection.
The data.
Together for August first.
Um, well, questions slash concern. So we're talking about having community forums in the summer. A lot of people go out for vacation. So my concern is we're not really gonna have a representative picture of the community. We might have some some forums where we have limited attendance and it's because people are going away. So you just kind of want to set expectations that, yes, our intention is to get as many responses and all of that, but. Those forums might be lightly attended.
And I I I've thought about this too, um especially in past board forums where it attended and um we've had like. Before I was on the board of the 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 budget forums and I was one of like three in the room. So, you know, those those are things that have happened in the past and have limited attendance. So uh I think getting the word out there and and seeing, and then also working with our community partners. How can we get um? Them involved to really help us boost attendance on on these things.
Did you have a lot of summer camps in the schools? Almost half the schools probably be going there during the summertime. So yeah, there'll be.
Thank you. Capture some feedback from those.
Realistically, we push, we push. You know, advocate, we can communicate. Turnout is dependent upon the people. But Avery has hosted several community forums. He has been excellent at communicating, pushing them, putting them on our parent square. We just recently devastated our district with cuts. The last community forum, I think, had under thirty or forty people. And that is no fault of us, no fault of the district, no fault of anybody. We can lead a host to water, but we cannot make them drink. Today was a very good turnout in Hartford. We had a couple of hundreds of people. It is, it is one of those advocacy and outreach is hit and miss. It's not, it's not really dependent upon. The outreach. I mean, we're showing that effort for the outreach, but because the state board of education don't even have that much turnout at their board meetings either, most entitled. It's something really, really giant. So so they can't fault us for not.
I guess I would say also, because it's going two weeks by then, you could have a lot of done in terms of for picks, regulations. Yes, next time we'll also have, I'm sure a lot to say, and how we can get people to come this season, really. But I mean, he was. Boston Public Schools, so they did a lot of work getting community involved. So he'll probably be able to add to the conversation when we get to that. So we can hold some of this till then.
I just, I I know we we talked, I almost said it, things almost about community and stuff. Of course, they're what we have, but. Just hoping that everything that we do is driven by the community and my data. You know, I mean, you know, if we're not, if we're only gonna have like, you know, five, ten percent of community. We're just, we could, we could take that into consideration, but a lot, mostly everything that we do should be driven with that. You know, that's gonna tell us exactly on a big point, where we need to act and what we need to do. I mean, we got data. We we got plenty of that, that that and and affirmation is not the problem.
So so and we'll hold some of that, this question too is about that. And in fact, your recommendation involves standard. So very, a very important point that is absolutely right. You can't set a goal, as I feel. Now, I feel we should do this or think you should do that. The data shows that this is what we need. You could conceivably find parents coming to you and say, I don't think you should do this. But your professional staff might say, well, in order to achieve a certain level of skill set, we have to do this. So that's the difficult spot you'll find yourselves in, but you can't make decisions like that without data. Because without data, you say, I think you're wrong. You're not gonna remain like an official for long, but if you have data to support your positions, that helps a lot. So it's a very important point. And and again, if you have conscience coming up end of the year school activities already, your parents are coming, you know, maybe only five percent of your parents. From, you know, they've made it to June, come to these various events. Who went to those events? If you have laptops set up with thought exchange questions, Nvidia center or libraries or, you know, other areas. You have the principal who announces the chorus coming on stage before you leave today. Please take five minutes and ask some really important questions for the board. Your computer's set up. It's all public space. So. Know some kinds of multimodal ways of of getting those kinds of inputs. Parents, if they don't have the time and ability to go to an evening meeting. Maybe they're fifteen minutes to answer questions. That might be helpful to you.
I'll say um with the forums, you know, we the superintendent to help with that by maybe getting the packs involved. Because we have, there's 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 some very active packs in the district and there's others that we work with. We can get them, you know, to like shoot an email to their parents, like, hey, come out. Through, you know, the forum, I think that could be helpful because like, I think that's probably something where we lacked a little bit in the past. I'm not sure if we actually utilize the facts the way we should.
That's what we were saying, um even with what we discovered today in Hartford. I think I have two or three calls about the event. There was those phone calls that went out. But that was, thanks, here's where I'm seeing, but it was a actual audio recording, which was to be very impressive because I've never. Those before, uh getting some state legislative, you know, a bit, but that was, that was, I think, me and I was like, I got another. I got another. So I think I have two or three that I got called. So that was very informative. And this is towards the emails, the emails, I think.
I I feel that they will come out. Why? Because they see the change. They see what we're doing. They see we fight for our kids. They see we want our kids to be funded and, you know, the board with that they agree. They think with us and we communicate. They see, I really, they open now. That my squad didn't stop, my two squad didn't stop. Test message, I can show you how they probably said, good, you know, the board, people sort of there, they that they breathe. They see Facebook Live, W, we did history today, you know, and I'm very glad that we go, uh, you know, all the people with the house over there. They see, they see people that we always say they're watching us. And trust me, they're watching us very good. And I know the parent that will come out. Because as uh Ms. Perry said, uh, sometimes we got, or they shut four or three parents. We are the ones that come, the 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 rule is four. Because they see what we're doing. Before they wanna come because we want to give the information out the way it's supposed to be, you know, it's not lack of communication. It's what it's like. But now our doors open, policy is open. That they reason is twenty four seven, we don't stop. In us, the board member. So, you know, we do our thing, we communicate, we do Facebook Live, everything, you know, communicate, communication with the pack leaders. They're very happy, you know, the communication going out to Bridgeport very good. The state, they know what we're doing. And I believe we be planning very good. I know parents that will come out. You know, because they know what we want. They know by fighting for our kids, so.
So I I want to make sure we get to all of the questions, you know, kind of, would it make sense? Um, from your original goal to replace the language in terms of the plan to just incorporate that bullet number one from the state? Is that is correct? It's in action? You know, who's gonna be doing what? I would say that there's a couple of sub things under there you might need to talk about, like the Dr. Avery body. Well, I'm gonna say June second, which is when we'll be back talking about communication, to at least have something draft available. Not even necessarily a formal draft, but a series of questions and potential actions. Run it through Chris just for some feedback. And then with the idea that, I would say, between then and the middle of June at least. That you distribute the surveys, if if that's achievable.
Yeah.
At the two, two week increments. Yeah. And so that, and as far as the um, if you establish or potential dates or community surveys. Um, that gives you some time to plan. I would say those should be scheduled and now summer's in the way. But they're gonna be in the summer. I mean, whether you try to do a couple on a weekend for those people who are working at night, a couple evenings. Geographically around the city so that people have a chance to go somewhere close. I leave that to you, I think, to come up with what you think the particulars ought to be. And we can. If you have something as a sort of draft plan for the second, we can also have Chris look at that and just offer some advice on. How we could tweak that to make that a little better. Is that doable?
What about the dates for the forums?
That's where.
That's where I was going. Yeah. Should they be um July? Did they say?
They said by August.
By August first. So if you figure maybe two in July, uh three in July, one the end of June. Two in June, two in July or four in July. I guess I'd leave it to you, but with the idea that you have to have it before August first. And then taking into account summers, vacations, I don't know who you'd want there other than board members, probably somebody from staff. So um so if we substitute the actions for now, although you might say number two is. That at the appropriate time establishing comprehensive strategic plan process. Because I think that long term is where you want.
I think you had it here six months after.
Right.
And that gives time for other like. And and within that hiring, like I go higher, so then you can get like. A swine analysis done and all, all the other things that go on should be planned and we have time to do that.
Right. And and take your time with that. A lot of community, a lot of data gathering. Um, and Dr. Avery is going to be pulling a lot of that together for you based on the second goal. Okay, these all really dovetail with each other quite well. Okay, so that takes care of number one. Number two, um and Dr. Avery had already already suggested use of thought exchange. Um, to pull together from staff recommendations, key three areas focused on student achievement by day nineteen. That still works well with the state's expectation that you will receive a presentation of staff recommendations by August first. So that gives you a little more time if you want to compress that up a little bit, although I guess staff would be waiting some for the summer.
I think we did raise in that a survey out to staff. A comprehensive one for the, for the, for the, for the district. So we'll, we'll probably end up getting some of those, that information from staff, I think, in the next two weeks. So maybe perfect time for pulling some of those things out.
So their expectation, August first, you'll receive a presentation on recommendations, which could align with the work that you said. You've already got the approach, basically. And then um the other part, and this is, I think, more something, well, maybe through bylaws. Talking about having dedicated time at each regular board meeting to talk about student achievement. Um, that's probably the best way you're gonna actually codify that. Otherwise, it could slip through the cracks. Yeah, I would look at number two and I would, it's really gonna be critical that you pick three high leverage areas. So it really is gonna require significant expertise from the team. You don't want to just simply, um, did you already have the the. You know, the state support part around high school. Is there anything there, um SAT performance or? Or attendance, chronic content absenteeism, or whatever reports you're getting from the state already. Might be a key, critical leverage point that you want to focus in on to the improvement effort. I'll, we'll also look in key areas like third grade reading, the point where you're looking at kids going from learn to read to reading to learn. Look at algebra as a gateway, math course for higher, higher mathematics. I would really focus it on key leverage points so that you can, as a district, not not have twelve different things that you're you're tracing and trying to track down and chase. But three things that you're that really, if you get it right, that would be type three or four other things.
Any recommendation if, or the recommendation to save every meeting?
Every regular.
Every regular meeting, um specifically those three items and just keep it to those or?
I I in terms of every meeting, I would, I would talk about what are our efforts in looking at, if you're looking at algebra or you're looking at third grade reading. You you would want to know as a board, what are our, our, what what efforts are we employing to to improve our reading scores in third grade? What kinds of assessments the students get? What kind of in-house assessments we provide?
And then look at attendance, you know, chronic, chronic absenteeism, those types of things are kind of constantly flowing day by day. So you can pick out a few things, but and even with reading or math or science school, which you can still do. And we can help with that because that's one of the things that we're going to be doing a lot, a lot more focused on as well is. What are we doing academically and how are we measuring what we're doing academically? So it fits right into what we're gonna be doing anyway. So it's an easy conversation for us to have. You know, especially to to teach you guys how to do it in order to be able to flip the roles a little bit, maybe. This first semester, we can do it. In second semester, we can teach the board how to look at the data and interpret the data back to the community. So there's, there's different ways we can do that, uh which I think is really kind of good that it's even on here. But we're gonna be doing the same thing, that data needs to be out in front of this community and the board at all times. Every time we have a public meeting, we should be showing and sharing what progress we're making. What progress we're making, even if it's baby steps.
If you if you change the trajectory in algebra scores and third grade reading scores and your chronic absenteeism rates. You can, those things will affect your social studies performance, science performance, not kids are reading more nonfiction, they're improving their reading skills. So again. Coming from, I was a language arts person, I was a language arts director, I was, that's my area of of real interest. It was really, the 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 key indicator for me was third grade reading. If we can change, if we can see improvement in third grade reading scores, I I could feel, I could sleep at night thinking that. Well, that's going to have a positive impact on other things in my my district.
Yeah, this one, this one's basically in my mind an easy fix. Definitely as part of the uh order business on the agenda, we've already got like. Bullet points of everything and commonalities of the agenda under the superintendent's report, we could probably put a subset A. Student achievement and that uh reported by the superintendent and that that would that would satisfy this and. He can integrate the three, he or she can integrate the three um points, whatever they come up with, doesn't have to be delineated. That we need to be this and this and that, we don't kind of go through the whole. Correct, yes, that's that's right, that's already the bylaw already and um. And there's something, and right, and if there's something, right, and if there's something on that's not. Given if the board wants, we could always um refer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's important to hit the three priorities every time, but there's also other things that are gonna be. Data is gonna be coming in central office, there may be some test boards that just came back, and you need to hear as much of that as you can, so. But the idea that your board meetings are more about learning about children learning than they are about killer bees, buses, pledges. Buildings.
Hey, that that was kind of like Royce's point, that that really does it builds muscle memory for the board, that if you're looking at those three things, that's what you're discussing. You you, it's a transferable skill, political science and other assessments that are happening.
And then we could even, we could even refine the bullet points and, I mean, for the, if you want to put A, B, and C for the three points that he comes up with, that's.
We already, we already had it already. Done pretty much, and it's just really focusing in on, you know, what the state of Connecticut, you know, measures for school districts. And so this far balance piece is already there. It it talks about math, science, social studies, bilingual and. Uh career, career college, college and career goals, you talk about chronic absenteeism. Uh and suspension rates, so those are critical areas of data sources that the state of Connecticut wants you, that's why they grade you. And so if you, if we stay focused on those areas, those are the things that we we've already kind of made up. You know, uh uh goals of what we want to achieve for next year for the district. Uh and so it's already pretty much, we have to pre-plan this anyway, so it's already done, we just have to kind of merge it into the day-to-day practices of what we do. And it's a, it's an easy thing to do.
We just, my only comment maybe that. If you're looking at three, go back to the great degree, you know, that the hedgehog principle. You are completely devoted to looking at three key indicators, if you, if you, if your bet would be. If you get these three, three things right, we're gonna see a big advance, enhancement in other areas. That that's the hedgehog, that those are your three, we're focusing as a board, but we're gonna be dogging in our pursuit of that, doesn't mean that we have to look at.
No, but I think you make a good point though, because what you have to look at is that you have these seven or eight little criteria that the state measures. But like you say, you go back through and say, okay, from these data sources, if we do these, it's almost the theory of action, if we do these things. This will happen, right? And so, because when you look at suspension rates, if you keep kids in school. You know, you're gonna have more kid connected to your math, science, social studies curriculum, because they're not suspended and and not getting the curriculum, right? So if you do this, then this will happen. So we can take those initiatives and our data points and say. If we do these three things out of all of these, although we keep focused on all of them, then we're gonna get the biggest bang for our buck, right?
If you commit it to lowering your chronic absenteeism rates, because the student is going to see that. The the school is invested in me, they're calling me, they're making sure I'm coming to school, they care about me. And when few kids feel like they're being cared for, they perform better.
Right, but then you look at, what is the district investing in? Say if we're gonna do a math goal. Well, we have to look at our math curriculum, we gotta look at the teachers in the classroom teaching the lesson, right? All these different things are focused in on those three points, so it makes sense, right? It's not just one thing and you're gonna get it done, there's so many underlying things, and that's what superintendents do, guys. We look at all these things to make the system work, right? And so, but the board makes the goal. And then we have to hit that goal, right? And then if some days don't hit the goal, then you need to get your superintendent because. They're not doing the work if they don't have the means and the resources to get that done, right? So that's what boards listen to the superintendent, say, hey, we need these things to hit these goals, so can you make sure that we get this? And that's that's the collaboration that we 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 have to have, and we can do it that way, so.
So uh one more, and then I want to suggest something.
Yeah, I I I agree with Dr. Avery, uh that we should definitely have all that data, but um if we're going to include it. To your point about the three data points, we need three measurable data points that are measurable at every other board meeting.
Yeah, me too.
So so we got to to comprehensive report, yes, definitely, and definitely to satisfy. Our state. Banding right here.
Yep, so what I'm gonna suggest for the um connection steps for this goal. One, take Dr. Avery's language about thought exchange and developing the three key areas focused. Um yet, May nineteen, by August first, the board will receive the presentation from the super. I think to blend those two paragraphs together, and I'm happy to take that on if you want, for somebody else to do that, okay. Um and then the second one, um the only thing I would add. Number two, with the board leader dedicating time, et cetera, by. Crafting them into the board bylaws, I would just draw the connection between those expectations and codifying them in bylaws. And that will be done by August first, um well, I won't speak for the policy committee, but um.
I I think the mean policy machine.
Yeah. He's in a meeting, that's pretty good, but I I think that that, what the dates, is it specific date is in there or not? That the expectation is that the policy, the bylaw will reflect. That the board's desire to have student data at every regular board meeting. Reword that.
That that's huge.
It is huge. That's the difference between boards that lead and boards that manage, boards that lead are talking about students learning, because that's what this is all about.
I did suggest that maybe, maybe not August first, I'm gonna have one, only because we have all the others on, like maybe. They're not gonna have regular board meetings until the end of August, so you know, maybe by the first board meeting. Like of the year.
It may be that that.
Because that the 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 first board meeting of the year is. Or be the log, is it what I say?
The first board meeting in August, just changed the wording to that.
Yeah. It's twenty fifth.
First board meeting.
Where that would be done, that doesn't approve the bylaw, like I mean.
And again, not for me to why they they put August first, but as long as, because it's a by. I know they're such a receiver presentation, it doesn't say that you won't have done anything with it.
Yeah, I think that regularly scheduled, it's not gonna be the first regularly scheduled.
So I think we got that, all right, so I don't have here to get that straight out. I'm gonna put that in, just gonna do first. Okay, third, um ensure this new responsibility. I'm looking at.
I had no hand, but go ahead, sorry, yes.
Oh.
Your hand wasn't on, yeah, go ahead.
My hand was like this, sorry, I was doing it like this.
Yes, you, yes, that's a hand up.
And I was going like this. Just on that one alone. I would renew my request of constancy and repetition. That we received the superintendent's report in advance of board meetings. So that we can look at the data in advance. That's all.
Thank you.
Your recommendation is that that be included in the language to be updated in the bylaws.
If we're gonna update the bylaws, I'm gonna put it in the bylaws. It it's my understanding, it's general practice among most cave members. Um standard practice among most cave members. And uh um it's various conventions I've been to. But I've been told by cave members uh and Leonard, and um so. I'm just recommending that it it be in- included in our packet, but it was done in by past superintendents here. Um and it should be i- as as a part of our packets, so that we have a chance to review the data. Before we go into the board meeting, so that we can look at it.
Good point. So Dr. Avery had said develop implemented comprehensive budget plan and ensure fiscal responsibilities, sustainability for the next five years. State included. Um by September first, the board will conduct an initial review of comprehensive budget binder developed by the superintendent in advance of twenty twenty six. As a budget season, adopt the binder by October twenty twenty five. I guess the question I would ask. Is when you're talking about a budget binder, is that the draft budget? Because it seems like presenting a board budget in September would be pretty close to impossible.
One of the things that is hitting and talked about is that he's gonna help the, you know, processing the procedure for. Developing the budget timelines, all that stuff, you know, very comprehensive, so that's, I think, is what they're referring. Yeah, but we haven't had a chance to sit long enough to talk a little about the the end and now of what that binder is, but I've seen one similar to what he's talking about. Uh which will be very helpful. Yes, more like a planning manual, expectation of who's gonna do what, what time, and you know, that kind of thing, what meetings will be held, that kind of thing. All of that comprehension will be laid out.
In the past, it has like one sheet, like my December will have this. But well, me forming January, but I think there's more intense from what I.
And I I'm suspecting to some extent, while you may be aware of what that is, that this is really for administrations to lay out the work they have to do. Whereas what you're talking about is really your calendar, oh, I'm sorry. So that that's just my point, that that one pager really talks about the board's time quality. Rather than the in-depth review that Dr. Lance talked about, but they're both very important, yeah. So are we? The trailer?
Yeah, it sounds like a wish list to me. Um I mean, is this like saying that we're hoping to have this much money? Or is this, is this a realistic plan?
We're not talking about the dollars and cents, we're talking about the procedures and processes to ensure that they're being done in a fiscally responsible way.
Ah, okay, I misunderstood. I I have the paper now in front of me. And I'm 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 reading it and I don't see it as procedures. So this is just how we're gonna do it, the timeline that we already thought we had? Okay, I'm good.
They get the timeline, because the part, first part of the timeline is the superintendent is developing a budget, he's meeting with department people. He's looking at resources in the district, what his needs are, he then brings that, then at one point, he brings that. His superintendent budget that represents his needs and the district's professional opinion, what he needs. He presents that to the full board, and so it's half hour of PowerPoint, three slides, this is. This is our goal, our vision, we hope to achieve, this is the the new purchases, this is, if you come in with a level budget, you know. His thing, and the board hears it, asks clarifying questions, then it convenes to the finance committee. Where the finance committee needs four or five times for this committee to look at object codes, look at increases, why are we seeing a thirty percent increase in this account? And he has all those questions, superintendent with his team will bring the specialized person in and answer those questions, but special education wasn't. Sixty cent based in these accounts, and and then, then at that point, after those workshops. The the finance committee's due diligence goes to the full board for a conversation and a vote. So superintendent budget now becomes the board budget, and then it's that, so no surprises, that's that's the manual, that's what the. The community sees, your your city council sees, and what is turned over to city council. These increases, these are the main points we even can look at, here are the accounts that are going up and where we're all stands. This is the city council's job to to take the mayor's job to figure out what those numbers are, what are we seeing, why are the boys asking for an eight percent increase or a twelve percent increase? What are the tribes of that budget increase? So. And that's what I see in terms of a manual that will help. Everyone understand what the process is and what the timeline is for, so that you expect. Your superintendent in November or December to do his, we should call it hit line, you know, this is, this is the. Proposal, this is what we asked before to you now, and then at that point, the finance committee knows that by this date. We have to have our workshop completed by this date, somebody goes to the full board, so they can vote by this date. And basically you work backwards from the moment where the council votes in the budget and you work backwards. That's what I see.
And basically, the expectation is that you will have that initial review of that binder by September first. Adopt the binder by October.
And the binder might include like worksheets for departments to to fill out, any personnel requests and rationing out.
If we're changing, it's the way they budgeted the last couple of years, we're not gonna budget the way we're doing that. We're giving all that back to the campuses a little bit, so that's gonna be a little different process, I'm gonna have to. Work those pro- those procedural things out moving forward before we implement things, so.
And that's where your communication person, as you said, it can be really important to you to help communicate to your departments as to why it's a little different. And so you understand that, you know, this, this is definitely for the sake of doing these, definitely, but this will ultimately get us for you to do. So we're in a six-hour workshop, it's that, it says a three-hour workshop.
Yes, Joe?
Yeah, I'm just, just on the budget, um we do have a comprehensive timeline that we need to probably maybe adopt it. Adopt that as policy, because right now it's always proposed timelines, and we've got relatively consistent timeline with the city council and the. State, we know, we know, but um just want to point out that this is not saying we have to have a budget in place by these dates. We're just looking at the binder and the plan, so so we don't have lots.
How you get there, we have time to get.
When I saw binder, that that didn't mean complete budget.
Right, right, yeah, just want to make sure.
That's one of the things we're lacking in the district is that people should be able to kind of get a guy to do the work. We got so much turnover, you know, in in and so you have to have something to follow, right? So we, that's really what they're helping internally do in HR, in finance, in purchasing. Just having something to to fall back on.
But when you have all those procedures in place, it's gonna make your life as an educator. Because that's why you kept into this job, not the national budgets and all that other stuff.
And and obviously just going back into the timeline to develop that, how the um binder and the framework that you make in this. Guide that, there might be a couple of adjustments that need to be made because of shifting timelines on the city council, I think that here kind of is like a little skewed. So we might need to push timeline up or down some a little bit, but if we get that framework with the timeline, we know, and. Quarterly reports are gonna be important as well going forward, because we can look at that last quarterly report of fifteen. And by October, eh in developing, we can see where we are in October for pre-planning for the next.
So you're pushing with actuals, so to Dr. Avery, um is Ed gonna be helping with any proposed policy work too? In terms of what should be.
Based on how he's gonna guide through development of the manual. So yes, probably.
Okay, and then working in conjunction with Jody. Because I'd like to get on to weeds for a bit, got a plan. Um but the second part to the goal, because I think the first we figured out, second part is reviewing update policies and that by board's oversight. Um and just between Ed, Dr. Avery, Jody. Billy, um working with policy committee should be able to fine tune that. And by July first, they're talking about reviewing that.
And and so I think we need a policy, I'm not sure if we have one, um specifically on what they're asking for.
It's, they're all over the place, it's.
We needed like. We probably need support now.
Royce, I talked earlier for the meeting, so I wanted to talk to him offline. To talk to him, when it comes to the three thousand series, could you, would you, non-instructional? To talk to him, when it comes to the three thousand series, could you, would you, non-instructional operations? You want to really give your, this is a fine line between the accountability piece that you have and allowing the superintendent to operate the district. So those are the kinds of things I want to work with the superintendent on to ensure that I don't want to simply make take things for granted or make assumptions about what are the appropriate thresholds for boards to approve certain things, or for the superintendent to do certain things. So I'm making a division, but like, why do you want to put on?
And with that, is that I'm thinking about the timeline for that, if if we have this follow the July first, we think that's the next to be done by then. Um, the last regular board meeting is June nine. Um, and then kind of, I guess everything after that is all special meetings, so do you have any committee meetings after that, like? There could be a committee meeting, a policy committee, that's a need, but it's after the board meeting, so we would have to kind of schedule another meeting to approve that policy.
Right.
Um, and that would leave us with only like two weeks to do that, so.
Well, you mentioned having a special meeting if you needed it.
We need it, yeah, so. So do we think that this timeline work to have it done by?
I think, you know, what I've been with with the superintendent, a two-hour Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
Where he has the three thousand series, I have the three thousand series, I already have things that I would want to ask questions about. And I think we could, two of us could come up with recommended language for budget change, for changes in policy related to budget. That would be, he would be pretty clear with the rationale and and it's for this.
Trying to make a suggestion that rather than send it through a committee, I mean, all of this is is a lot, and it's two steps committee and full board creating a temporary A hot committee of the whole of the board to implement the state's recommendations to discuss it, so we could skip a step and move a little more efficient.
Effectively.
Effective, if, effectively, thank you, I'm sorry.
So, and and we're talking about way being the first reading and treating it like a.
No, with with basically waving it, we'll, the subcommittee going to a subcommittee, because we're gonna have to discuss anyway. And it's you, there's usually five people at the policy committee anyway, so we gotta quell at those committees. Where if all five agree, it's basically gonna be a policy anyway, but after the first meeting.
It seems like that would be expeditious, that's what we feel, yeah, and I guess, that that's expeditious. It's keep people with this, with board chair and policy chair.
But 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 if that's favorable, perhaps it could be on the agenda for the next regular meeting to create that committee. Before with that, so we can, that, that's out.
So, um, as far as the last part, review update policies, blah blah blah, who's kind of talked about that, Jody's gonna work on that with Dr. Avery.
Oh, I'm sorry. It says we'll have, we'll conduct a review by November, but we'll not adopt it until August.
Right.
Of course, that like, so we may not even let them vote on it until later on.
Right, and it doesn't even say beginning of August, because it's August and did that regular board meeting.
We can, as long as you guys are sitting up and doing the review and and we can be here in a board meeting, maybe, you don't necessarily need to adopt the policy to be.
Yeah, I would say that. No, thank you, dude. We're gonna be in place for the for the useful year, and it's like the process of.
So, so this language will cover that. So again, I'll collect the thoughts.
Yeah.
Go get the traditions for the goal. We're over halfway done. So, um, improve the working relationship of board members and the superintendent. Again, we're back to bylaws, you know, each, your goal was create a culture where constructive criticism is valued and used as a tool for development. Um, the state said by July first, you will adopt bylaws and expectation for board member decorum during meetings. Or the ball's a development about the method by which the board will respond to members who violated decorum standards. The board will not fail to uphold, but I guess to sort of their expectation in terms of performance, the board will not have to uphold the adopted bylaws of decorum standard as adopted through January twenty sixth, so they wanted to see the board following the bylaws that are adopted by July first.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, you know, it's important to you, you you stated your bylaws. And the question, the overall question I would ask you is, do your bylaws, as they're currently written and have been recently adopted, do they hold you at the board meeting? Which point?
No, I think that's what we discussed, um, the first time we had this meeting. During the second training, we were, we should establish a bylaw at norms and expectations of the board, a board's quorum. I think that's something that has to happen, so.
Okay.
That, basically, all of it already exists within the bylaws, we've got processes under scenes, we're supposed to execute all the meetings, that's all, that's already written into the bylaws. But the problem, the problem is the bylaws weren't being enforced, they weren't being followed. So I think maybe a better way to possibly go would be to, maybe a resolution to strictly adhere to our bylaws as far as and hold ourselves accountable, just we commit ourselves to the bylaws as they exist. Is it, this, 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 this.
There was a, there was one of the training where you showed us a contract, like a kind of a but that's something I was looking at, like, hey, to implement, where they go it's a bylaw with our expectations specifically, so yeah, it's it's throughout the bylaw, but here are the specifics, and you know, that's.
So you could adopt as a board, like either call it conduct, call it our meeting norms. Um, establishing during our meetings, this is how we will behave, you know, outside of meetings, this is how we behave. Any of these rules, I mean, I I see their expectation is that some of these are actually codified. I think when you have to look at a rule like this as if I do this, I'll be punished. We've lost sight of white work or meditation, because we shouldn't need to have norms that are so strict that you violated the rule, you're being punished. Shame on us if we allow ourselves to do that.
I think the expedite, can, Jody, do you have some samples from other districts that they use? I think it's easier than just to grab it and look at it and say, hey, yes, no, maybe combine, whatever, if that would be better.
I think that's very much.
I'm very busy, you know.
I'll send you a few, a few codes of conduct, bro.
Again, can I, can I briefly say? Oh, I apologize.
No, because we do have one, you know, I wanna make sure that you guys understand that we do have one.
Hold it up.
Yes, there it is, we do have one, it's all done.
Yeah, it's the first page.
This is one of the things that I always try to say, just do a reset, and sit down as a board and read, as a board, just have a little thing, and just read the the bylaws together. Because unfortunately, we have no one that has never read these bylaws. I'm three generations deep in these bylaws, even when I came as a board member. And the very first meeting after my swing in and December first, December ele- eleven, they threw the bylaws and threw it against out the window.
Nine one one two.
You know, and and this is the thing that it 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 should, and you said it right in the beginning when you hit this point about things about how do we make sure that we are, that the state wants to see that we're working within our bylaw. Nothing can be worked outside of that, and that is huge, because then we will hold each other accountable, saying, no, this is what it said. And every single one of us are accountable to that bylaw.
So I want to ask you a question, because I I hear the saying a lot, I use it myself all the time, we're gonna hold ourselves accountable, what does that actually?
Yeah, like, how are we doing that?
Yeah, but and I hope, yeah, absolutely, yeah. I think it's about our votes, our votes.
The sense.
The censorship law.
Yeah, but does that have to go straight to censorship, like, I don't like that.
We, we as a board, we go, c- censorship's not a problem. That essentially, we gotta go to trial and we can decide how to censor first. We can just censor and just say this, and we, or we can implement as a board anything within our power and duties, strip committees. Um, we can't just speak in words, um, there's a, there's a couple of different things. If you're, if you're an officer, an or- an or- no, officer acts out of character or something like that, they can be stripped of that office and duty. And then that's all written in here, we've, we've got procedures to have trials, and hold people accountable, that's there, it just has never been used.
Sorry, I heard something. No, I'm guessing.
I'm sorry.
But I guess the question I have is, they're certain specific, will adopt bylaws and expectations for decorum. If if you already have bylaws that do that, and I think Jody has the ability to share some ideas, because we talked about conduct and there might be some better language, but the expectation is that this board will follow the bylaws. We don't follow the bylaws, we will hold ourselves accountable. What that means depends on what your language currently says, or what the updated policy may say later. I don't want to adjudicate that tonight, we don't need to.
And that's what the board chair said, that we can at the beginning, sit down, come to that agreement, have those points of, you know, comment, and have each board member sign.
But and and that's what they sometimes do, I mean, there's there's bylaws, and then there's code of conduct, which is in a meeting, this is how we will behave. It doesn't hurt to print out a copy of that with a space for every board member in here, when he signs, read it and sign it once a year. At the beginning of every school year, that first meeting and end of Oc- or August or early September, we use this, start meetings. Um, we are gonna hold ourselves to this, we're gonna reiterate it, we stand by these, some even do that with the code of ethics, which is.
Yeah, I think, um.
All right, so again, I want to keep us moving to make sure we get through all this work. You also have to establish a calendar for reviewing the district policy annual, starting with mandated policies and bylaws, that's ongoing anyway.
So.
This, okay, I just want to finish this sentence, and we'll go to Mr. Traver. Um, the board will not, well, okay, this is the same thing, the board will conduct the first review of a calendar for updating board policies and adopt such calendars. So again, I don't know, Jody, when you're working with them, if you're talking about a calendar, I know you've been sort of doing this, and again, each meeting, but I don't know. While you're pondering that, let me see if Mr. Traver has to say. Yeah.
I I think that, I think that there, it's worth looking at code of conduct for a simpler method of uh, rebuking colleague whose behavior crosses a line. We have a a very serious way of rebuking a colleague. But occasionally, it would be easier to just note that a colleague has gone over a line and leave it at that. And maybe, you know, we we don't really have we have a, a serious censoring process, which involves going to trial. Um, but maybe if there was a way to simply rebuke them uh, with a simple vote, when we think that they have gone over the line, that would be.
Kind of where I was getting at too, because our censorship, to jump straight to censorship when they're doing, you know, something, it's it's so like, if there's something written like this, not as, essentially, you have to go through that session and go through and put it on the, it's so much where we could just like nip it right then and there and hopefully.
Point of order, point of order. I take offense to that.
Well, that's not a point of order.
No, 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 yeah, I I exactly, but now, now, if you, now, now, if.
And I, Joe, I wasn't done, so I still have the floor. So I I I'm gonna hold the floor. And and just simply say, in in our student policy and in the concept of just cause in labor relations concept is to, um, you know, sort of give minimal rebuke um, in the interest of trying to encourage good behavior. And in encouraging good behavior with minimal rebuke, you you try and move the board into a better behavior pattern. Um, uh, and then, you know, if you have to get to the more serious, uh, rebukes of suspensions or censurships or uh, uh, you know, terminations, then we get to those down the line. So I I just think we might want to take a look at our, our policy from that point of view.
So so Joe, what Joe did, he's saying point of order, then I would say out of order, you know, that's, that's the, that's the rebuke. But necessarily, necessarily, everybody's following, that's my point, you know, so I I don't know, I think there's.
But ignore.
Yeah.
If I hit off the idea, this would be a another meeting.
Yeah.
We're down the road, where we have a session like this, where we talk about your meetings and behavior.
Yeah.
And it's, what do we expect when we're in a meeting? We will listen to each other, we will not disdain each other, we will talk nice, however you want to say it. And then when you agree to that code of conduct, code of conduct, or build meeting norms, whatever you want to call it. Once the board has said, these are our meeting norms, any violation of that code of conduct is then out of order. So as chair, you can say, according to our code of conduct, you're not supposed to do this, you just did that, I mean, you know, I wanted to just remind you that behavior is not acceptable. If it continues, then you have to escalate, and that gets into work or a policy. But I, lots of boards have meeting norms, and it's, you know, we're listening, we're listening to each other, and we're gonna hear each other, we will not over, talk over each other, et cetera, so.
No, 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 Mr. Traver, were you done?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I know, I know, I said something, but but the first time, it it was quite essential. Um, that is how we hold each other accountable. Uh, Mr. Crusoe just pointed out that now I'm on, and he was in fact correct. If we do that religiously at the board meeting and the chair calls out, or I raise a point of order, or anybody can raise a point of order, when one, one board member is speaking over another board member, being disrespectful or rude, any board member may raise that up. If we follow that religiously through Robert's rules of, Robert's rules of order and religiously administer our meetings like that, no matter who's doing it, whether it's a favorite person or not, and with fidelity we do that, we will have more official readings, and we will be accountable to Mr. Traver's point, not going to the extreme of censorship.
Right, so so that requires a certain bit of work on everybody's part, because I have observed meetings here, not with this chair, where the chair says point of order. Not a point of order, somebody says point of order, it's not a point of order, yes, it is a point of order, no, it isn't a point of order, and this goes on for fifteen, twenty minutes, until you recess or end the meeting. So there has to be some level of accountability on all of your parts to accept that.
Or when they're, are in order and called out, or stop talking.
Now, Joe said point of order.
You keep going back, you have to stop.
States is point of order, you say that's not a valid point of order, I move you out of order. Instead of yelling, yes, it is point of order, he could say, I moved, uh, I challenged the decision of the chair, and then the board votes to decide, is he out of order or not? And then it's dead.
Yeah.
Win or lose, it's dead, rather than forty minutes of back and forth.
Be calm, here's a vote.
But it gets back to, we have to depend on each other to be honest with them, the work is about the children, it's not about me getting me winning.
Yeah.
And so.
We're becoming the smartest, loudest person in the room.
Yeah. All right, so for four. Um, I'll think.
Yell at that.
Okay, so you're making a lot of progress with the with the policy, um, option. So we are policies, you need to, you have listed those policies. But I can use this language here for that goal, with the understanding that's in process.
Right, yes.
Right? And then finally, um, review board's community structure to ensure effective use of board staff, time and effort. That came up clear in a lot of different ways, um, in terms of how much time you're spending of each other, how much you're killing your superintendent with all this extra work. Um, and then if your board meetings are still four and a half hours, it's not working right. Do you have a recommendation, you talked about subcommittee structure, do you have amongst, it was a collective body, recommendation as what kind of subcommittee structure you want? And I know, I know what I've heard is that the structure changes fairly regularly, you know, a lot of different subcommittees and you're looking to create a more consistent subcommittee structure with fewer subcommittees.
I personally liked, um, when you had that presentation about, you know, um, you know, having standing committees, so finance committee, uh, currently our sta- like, what would be our standing committees, and whether language is out there, would be on policy, finance, facilities and act- or instructions, of course, those are four committees.
So what's it, the policy?
Uh, facilities.
The personnel.
Which, I also like the idea that possibly being an ad hoc.
Especially.
Right now, we're doing, right now, we're doing such a, like, this is a masquerade, which, it makes sense for us to be a committee, because we have something, but that might be where those ad hoc cities, and I I know everybody doesn't agree with that, that's a bit of what I have to discuss thoroughly, basically.
I hear policy, finance, and there's a consensus around those two.
Yeah, and instruction is, of course, that's a, in the third meeting.
Instruction, support, you know, reinforce.
Yeah, and facilities.
Now, instead of facilities, which is, something like operation, which gets into a broader bandwidth. And and facilities can be separate depending on what your facilities projects are.
Yeah, and it's sort of, I think, facilities right now is sort of like operational right now, we we throw nutrition there, we, you know, there's, so just renaming it was probably.
Operation?
Yeah. And then the opportunity to create ad hoc committees at the, like, for instance, like the personnel committee, we're not always hiring, so like, do we need that would be a committee, that would be a committee of the whole, or, you know?
Yeah, and and how many? Yeah, and, and how many? I'm trying to think of, because most boards don't have a personnel committee except during negotiations.
Yeah, that's not.
Have a side one, so my committee is policies and personnel. So if something comes up with personnel, guess where it's going, into policy, everything that we've been working throughout the years, and all being strictly policy, policy, we did the team. You guys saying, well, you know, this team has been a wonderful team effort with, uh, with the administration to get all this stuff done. They've done the most slang, we just executed like it's supposed to be, they did the work, we executed, we put it on forward, and it's just been, you know.
So, so we're going to talk to this superintendent about a calendar for the policy, um, implementation of policy adoption. So that, okay.
Exactly.
So, let me give you a, so, so every board of education in the state of Connecticut has approved a, a diversity, diversity plan.
Do that go in there, you, go ahead.
Not, 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 not student, not integrating schools, but a, a staff diversity, hiring, hiring plan. So every, every school district in Connecticut has to have a plan, but it goes to the State Department of Education for, for approval. What committee would, would be responsible for understanding what that plan is, getting input into that plan, to the superintendent, for the full board to vote on that plan?
I think a current committee would be policy and personnel.
Yep.
Or instruction.
I agree.
Or, or the.
I would say there's more instruction in, uh, and instruction and support services.
Wait, we see it.
Okay, good.
I got it.
I, I would say, I would say instruction and support services, because that's more hiring teachers and recruitment in more specific areas of.
My previous system, we, we covered that in personnel, so that's why I was kind of pushing you on that.
Well, that's why I'm like, do we necessarily need, if that's a once a year thing, and we're in a hiring freeze, like, what are we actually?
Yeah, I agree, most personnel issues are superintendent issues, and they're, it's controlled by, you know, there's a lot of privacy issues and, you know, I think that you can't share with the board about issues related to personnel. But if you feel as though there are, when personnel matters come to the board, ground things that you have to sign off on, plan, you have to sign off on. If you, if there's a place, if there's a bucket, that, that falls in the policy, finance, instruction, support and operations. If you're comfortable with that, that's good enough for good standing committees, and, and, and the buckets are big enough to take on any of those. Issues that, that you need to deliberate over as, as a committee. And then that, what your deliberation would then be brought to the full board for discussion and approval if necessary.
Would be, and then we'll go to Mr. Trevor, but would we necessarily like, would we probably need a bylaw to create an ad hoc committee if, if we like, is?
But I think probably the expectation is that you have a policy that addresses subcommittee, so rather than trying to fix that tonight.
Yeah.
Is to, um, back to the policy committee to work on a bylaw that talks about committee structure. So again, Jody's got examples of what other towns do. Um, I know I worked with Shelton where they used to have nine subcommittees and went down to three.
Yeah.
Teaching, learning, facilities and budget and, um, policy. And they, and everything else, and, because here's the one thing we haven't talked about, there's a lot of stuff that ends up going to the subcommittee. It would be better served if you had a policy so that they don't have to bring it to a subcommittee, and there's an awful lot of stuffs that we, we have a meeting to vote on it, because we didn't have it in our policy. But the policy does two things, one, it takes it on somebody's plate, but second, it creates, um, consistency. So if anybody that further, ever runs into that problem again, they have guidance and policy, and it takes it away from the board. Four and a half hour meeting might be four hours, they get three minutes instead. All these long meetings, and is it helping you? And probably not there, because you have an awful lot of things you have to do. But this is where you're, this is your goal, I think ultimately, is how do we act more like a board of education instead of, um, or a governing board rather than a management board? A lot of the decisions you're probably going to do right now, really that is super important, leadership. So, so my task will be to provide, um, superintendent code of ethics policies, um, policy on ad hoc committee creation. Look at language around that defines the four standing policies that everyone have and provide all the superintendents, the issue that. And as far as the goal goes, basically, we're going to do what we said here, um, working with data. Yeah, I mean, you said, send the policy calendar, I mean, it's a, it would have been pretty quick, well, to share with me, with that calendar, so that I can.
Oh, that's not going forward. Well, then I have to one, hold it. Above five, establish a calendar.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe skip over that.
We do now, we're going to, from the policy. Mr. Trevor, are you waving your hand?
Yeah. Yes, my, my hand is up. I've always been perplexed in the new reconfiguration. We went from nine to seven to three to four. And, um, we had a, a parents and family committee. Um, Albert chaired that, and it dealt a lot with, uh, the pack P T S O stuff. Um, and that got put under, uh, instruction and support services. Um, so, it's in my committee. And it creates a lot of, of extra work in my committee. And, and it's legitimate and important work, I'm not meaning to suggest otherwise, um, but it, it. It's not, it's not instruction, it's, it's a, it's a different vein of work. So I'm just curious what you have, uh, Jody or, or Nick seen done with that area, uh, in other districts.
Can I ask something in relation to that? What's the, in other districts, what's the board involving in pack? Because here, like, here in the past, we had a committee that talked about tax stuff, and really, uh, from what I saw in the bylaws, it's really not our business. And so we have a whole committee on something that's not our business. And I understand that needs support to tax, but it really were overstepping, I think, but we, we have to bring tax stuff in. They have their own bylaws and, and.
They're separate, separate, separately governed, um, bodies, there's really, well, it's first I'd actually heard of a board getting involved in it. It's not fun to move with that, it's a board, it's a board by law, we're, we're subcommittee.
And I don't think it's, I'm not sure, I, I run a ball, I don't, I don't see it, I might need to say that, but. I think Joe.
Right, to, to be clear, let me start first, um, students and families committee, COVID solvable. And suspension, expulsion, expulsion and expulsion, um, bullying reports, uh, we, we see bullying reports, stay on top of those things, because. You gotta, you gotta understand how very unique this report is, and I like the old one hundred and sixty something issues. We've had years where we had a look at, we're not overseeing the pack P T S Os, we're overseeing. The administration of the pack P T S Os, we've had years where people weren't spend, weren't spending one dollar in their Title I funds. The function of our financial oversight, but seeing as it has to do with students and achievements, if the principals and the. Faculty weren't working together, that shows by spending zero dollars in your budget. So with that committee overseeing that portion, we could find out from the superintendent, why the school isn't spending any money, why they're not holding any events, what have you. That's not interfering with, that's not interfering with the pack and P T S O, we're like, why hasn't this building held one parent event for the whole entire year? And what is going on here, because we've had zero percent, I mean, when, our first number one, we, we had a lot, we had probably four or five schools that didn't spend a dime by March. And if you're not, if you're not, if you're feeding people, they're coming up. And that, that, that was one of the functions of the day, just to oversee, because we don't have a district pack, we're trying to get that back up, but they, they need to, but suspension and expulsions, bullying, and all, all these things that affect students. We used to have students bring before us, uh, we had a green recycling initiative, and before. Um, the diversity, equity, inclusion committee was formed, they would have brought us an, an item of their wanting. E D F T would have fell under that, but there was a diversity, equity, inclusion committee where it fell under, because it was a benefit, because it was E D F T, so this could be student driven items.
But I guess I'm still not feeling.
Yeah, it's.
They say four subcommittee.
Yeah.
Almost nothing that you mentioned really falls under the purview of the board directly.
So we're not supposed to receive suspension and expulsion reports, we're not supposed to receive bullying reports, we're supposed to let it just pretend we don't see schools, schools. With zero bullying reports, and not raise that up in the public.
I see, where it affects student achievement, and there's a direct connection between student achievement, that should be in the teaching and learning, where you call a committee.
Again, what Mr. Trevor just said, he has so much on his committee, he can't get to it all, so it's being neglected by not.
There's a difference between getting a quarterly report for an annual.
No, 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 I. I apologize.
We'll get to you in just.
I, I think like, like you said, a quarterly report, but also, um, a quarterly report, but also things like you just said earlier, like. Some things don't have to go through a committee that we are creating through a committee, like field trips, like if we had a policy for that, and how to do it. I'm throwing field trips out there, but like, there's so many other things too that we might, like, we're, we're taking up four hours of committee because we're going through five field trips.
Good example too.
And I think, and that's where we get some advantaging versus.
We say, when school boards are probably field trip.
Yeah.
That's, if you're in policy, it's sort of a good field trip, what, what's like, the principals should be able to make that decision, or superintendent, but two boards have to, maybe out of state, maybe not, maybe.
That's what you have to say.
That's the only what we do, it's out of state, by any, we're.
Overnight, overnight.
So, so, but, and again, we're trying to fix, fix it tonight, and we don't have to, all we have to say is that. The board is making it a, making it a goal by July first. Uh, to adopt a bylaw that respects subcommittee structures, where you'll have this conversation, so just like, finance, finance, instruction, support and operations, right now we're agreeing.
Facilities operate, like, looking at your operations, it's called facilities.
Do I call it, do I have operations and facilities?
Right now it's called facilities.
That's what it's called, name of the word, then you run again.
Oh, uh, I have, um, okay, policy, finance. Questions for board and operation.
Yeah, look at it for you. I'm trying to be sure.
I think you're out, we need to operation to cover like, what you guys, the specific facilities that are, and is involved in our review. So we can change the names while you guys.
In my mind, facilities is more an ad hoc, based on planning to do versus an operations. We just called it finance committee, and it handled facilities, it handled operations, you know, and much, but season, but, um. How do you do it, and that, again, you'll articulate that in the policy, what can be helpful is to actually sort of break down, what do all your committees do? And say, we do this, well, you know what, maybe a policy would keep you from having to do that, or we do this, well, is that more appropriate to do here and there? That kind of conversation on the road, I think would be very helpful to you.
And Joe gave us an example of that, um, of like what the committee, like you gave that to us, um, three meetings ago. And so something like that within the bylaws, I think will be helpful, like, so we know, basically, the, the goal is being, yeah, this is what we're supposed to be covering. Um, and then I guess Trevor had.
Right, that's, I'm sorry, I saw, I saw my last point first, and I didn't get to the original point, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just characterizing something you said, I believe, but, um. As far as the personnel, we, we gotta have something, we gotta have something with personnel, because you've got policies and procedures and hiring practices and procedures that are all embodied within the, um, personnel. Such as, oh, we gotta have interviews by the policy, by the personnel committee, gotta interview X amount of numbers of people, and then make the recommendation. So I, I would suggest we just write into the bylaws that. Um, the personnel committee shall be a committee at a whole meeting as needed. And, yeah, yeah, so, so, yes, it's, it's something simple like that.
It's on the board agenda?
Yeah.
Rather than being final two of a committee that you only bring out once in a while, if it's an occasional thing, just another thing that is presented to the board. I'm gonna say thing with, with, um, suspension, I, I would agree, the board should absolutely be aware of the number of suspensions, expulsions, and whether it's quarterly report or annual report. But the board should, this, from its oversight role, have an interest in, in issues related to student discipline on the schools. But is there a committee that's really sitting there studying it, or is that what you, your administration?
Yes, yes. Yes, Jody, I still have the floor, and yes, we are doing an in-depth study on, we started with sped. Which I was intrigued to see the state suggests that we weren't paying attention to this stuff. We were, we just completed a rather in-depth study, having commented and brought to the attention of the administration. Our concerns over the suspension rates for the special ed students, and have worked out a plan for the next year, which we're meeting with them on this coming week. Um, to present at the next committee meeting next week, um, for taking steps to, um, address the problem in the next coming year. Um, and while we were at it, we noticed, and in, in, um, the inordinate number of black male suspension rates. Um, that we wanted to take a closer look at, which we're in the process of taking a closer look at. So, we do, we are, in fact, studying now, based on the reports that were provided to us by the administration.
So one, one way to think about this as well is, again, it's, it's really a critical area of, of interest for, for your, for your district. And one thing, rather than having it as a board committee, or just simply a board, um, group looking at this. Should you have, or would you want to consider having a district, um, discipline oversight committee? It would be made up of a board member, a couple of administrators, a couple of teachers, who look at the data. And, and, and examine it with the level of scrutiny that you're, you're discussing, Bob, and, and to, and to report back to the board. On, on what, what the district oversight, discipline oversight committee is, is looking at, the, the, the amounts of suspensions, reasons for suspensions. Addressing, addressing the, addressing the suspensions, um, number of expulsions. All, all those various things that you're looking at, but you'd be better off as a, as, as having that as a superintendent function to develop a committee that would have board representation. So to have oversight on that, that data, those data points, and make recommendations to the full board.
Fair question.
So again, that, that's not something we have to answer tonight, but, but rather than basically a sole board, um, group, a committee, it could be a district committee looking at that.
It's a fair question that we might discuss at Thursday, at next week's meeting.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, we, we've, we've had those in the past, with males and color ad hoc committee, but what we found is we got to notice them anyway. And if it's meeting, wants them off to regularly look at these things anyway, we're in fact creating a committee.
Well, he said one board member, so.
Yeah, we're not talking about a board subcommittee, it's just one by the administration. To, to examine the data, and examine the information, then present it to the board. Yeah, for example, uh, many districts have attendance committees, they, they look at chronic absenteeism, they have teachers on it, they have administrators on it. Do they have a board member on it, do they have a community member on it? But their job is to look at all the attendance data, and to get there, and get those minds around it from different perspectives, to see what, what are the issues impacting student attendance? What, what, what are the things we could be doing differently, how can we be, um, gating our students more? So in that, in that information, we can go back to the full board for a presentation, for a board discussion, provide board input. It's not a board function to study attendance, nor should it be necessarily a board function to, to look at student discipline, that's why you're superintendent. That's why you should be looking broad based, in terms of engaging his community, so to really study this issue and provide you his best thinking on this.
And, because I, I'm, okay, so we've had, this sounds like a similar conversation we've had around special education. And we see what's kind of situation we are in special education right now, because these conversations were happening. Outside of purview of the board, outside of board committees, and they gather behind, when they're not public. A lot of times, not, not knocking any particular administration, it just does not get resolved.
So, so, in my mind, the board needs to establish, and part of it may be sort of, sort of sidelined to the.
sort of set, sort of sidelined to the budget process, but part of that is, it's more of the adminis- it sounds like there's a whole lot of stuff in central office that needs addressing.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, it's, you should have full confidence with your central office staff working the way that it's supposed to be working, that you will be presented with information as you need it about special education, about student performance, about behavior, et cetera, et cetera. What you have now is a disconnect. They're working on that. They're going to develop those things. You need to be, at some point, be able to let go of some of that, knowing that you have the trust in the system that it'll work. I realize that can't happen quite yet.
Right. Um, um, yeah, I, I, I just need to raise this up. This is not directed at current administration. This, 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 right, I, I just want to be clear on that, because this is systemic going back probably twenty, thirty years in this district.
But to my point, Joe, then it's that your, this board is taking on responsibilities it shouldn't have to, because there's been a vacuum in the appropriate places for that to be taken place. So what we're trying to do is get from wherever we are right now to here. And to get here, we have to have the processes in place that you will become aware of. Dr. Avery will talk about it. Here's how we know whether our special education services are being done the way they're expected to be done. Once you receive that kind of information, then you should be able to develop a level of trust that you might not have right now. And it's not, I, I've said this all along, it's not the superintendent, it's the superintendent's team.
And, and to, the other point, though, is, and the board does have direct oversight over at least one aspect of special education, finance, your finance committee, right? You should be able, every, every month, you should be getting an update on the amount of money you're spending on out placements and transportation costs and other things. And you should be tracking that budget against the, the, what the board approved budget and the talent pool budget. And, and it'd be concerted about overreaches and where you're going to, where, where you're going to take money out of certain accounts to cover those overreaches in special education. And use, and use all that data to develop the next budget. And, and you're going to figure out ways of cutting those costs because you're having more in-house programs and developing more, um, more, more SRBI kinds of programs to keep kids out of special education, whatever your strategies are. You're, you're working with data to, to inform your process moving forward and holding your superintendent accountable for those programs. But as a finance committee, you're looking at those numbers, you're asking questions about those numbers.
It was true. You, you made a very good point because you, you talked a little bit about.
Hold on, Mr. Treger.
And you, you talked about the board really getting involved in things that probably really shouldn't be involved. It is an administrative problem. When you go back to number, to goal number two, and you got, you got your list of things that you're paying attention to. Everything that we do operationally is part of that. You can pick the top three of those things. But every, every other aspect of what you're talking about, special ed, the hiring, everything that we do is part of those same goals that you're gonna set anyway in your strategic plan, your short-term, long-term plan. Everything that you're doing is there and, you know, but Joe makes a point that they haven't done that in years. So over the last twenty years, look at the progress that you made in this district, you know, and the reason why, because there was not focus on what kids are doing day to day, you know, and there's too much messing going on. Let us do a job, let us do what we're trained to do, and I think things will work really, really, really well, you know, but that, the board's not used to doing that because they got so much noise back here. They won't let the superintendent focus on the work. I just want to work, you know, to improve kids' perspectives. So give me the opportunity to do that. You can't judge me for what everybody else did before me. I had no control over that, you know, I'm a different person, I'm a different leader, we have different people in this district that's trying to do the right thing. You know, but it's discouraging because the way they got the system locked down, as a board, we have no way, we have no place to go. What the state's trying to do is free up a little bit of that. Give us the responsibility back to us. Let us show you that we can do this collectively and it's a partnership. It's just not superintendent. I'm not a demanding kind of person. Don't do that. It's all a collaborative piece and it works really, really well. And so I think we, we gotta let that go, let the past go and say, okay, how are we gonna make the future better? Right? And you gotta listen to what we're doing right here. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm loving this.
You know, superintendent's role and board's role. So the more you can articulate that, um.
It's a fair responsibility, right?
You know, it, it's not fair. In fairness, though, it's understandable why they're defending that.
Absolutely.
Somehow you, part of your job isn't just to make sure these processes and procedures are in place, but to make sure the board is aware that these processes and procedures are taking care of your concerns.
Yes.
And that's a communication. And it's a good point.
And, 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 and the final point, um.
I don't believe it.
This is, yeah, okay. One point, one thing, I think, um. The state coming in as a potential board takeover. And the board, elected board being removed from office, but there will still be a higher superintendent. So the city will lose its elected officials if we don't hold the superintendent accountable and do our role as the superintendent's nine-member supervisory team in holding him accountable for what we're supposed to hold him accountable for. So we can't cite that he is accountable to us and we are accountable to the community, you know, we're, we're straight.
And I heard nothing.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
Yeah, hope you're accountable. That's what you're paying me to do, hope you're accountable. I respect that. That's okay.
See, I went over to the next office and said, okay.
Where you're supposed to be.
Where's the one?
Rob is on.
Do you want to remove dying people from his desk?
All I wanted to say in my original, my original point, which Joe took and ran with in a completely different direction, is this, in looking at the, how the committees are structured, I asked the question about how some things were structured. And we need to think about how we want to structure our committees. Um, our committee function just fine. Um, we were presented a problem, uh, that we became, that came to our attention with regard to special ed students and discipline. It came to our attention. We had the data from this, from the administration, which verified that information. A parent came to us, the information was verified with the administration's information. We had a constructive discussion or two with the commit, at, with, at the committee level, with the administrators working with our committee. We developed a plan for how to deal with it. And everyone was happy with that plan. We're now working on nailing down that plan so that when we start the next school year, everybody's on the same, you know, everybody's moving in the same direction so that we don't start the new school year in chaos. We start the new school year, everybody moving in the same direction so that we don't have this problem in the next school year. So I, the problem worked well and, and the administration was responsive. Um, so I'm, I'm not raising it as a problem. I'm, I think it went well. Um, and, uh, don't you, Albert? Yeah. So, uh, I, I think it went very well. And in the course of it, in looking at the data that was provided to us, we found another problem, which we're in the process of trying to resolve that problem too. With regard to the, uh, high percentage of, of, of suspensions for black males. So, and, and there we're having constructive discussion too, as to how, why, and where that problem exists and, and where we can resolve that. And there may be better ways to deal with it, like you suggested, setting up a subcommittee to make it more efficient. Um, I would agree with you about that. And we sort of did that because between meetings, we held a subcommittee meeting of our own. Um, but without calling it that, but it worked. Um, I'm just saying, and, you know, our meetings, because of the volume of work we have between instruction and support services are meeting somewhat. Our meetings are not a couple hours long, our meetings are three or four hours long. That's the concern I have.
And, yeah, I think just, just generally, I think again, we, the board has all, can always consider is what's an administrative task and what's a board task. And again, I'm not, I'm not arguing or questioning the success of it, but I think.
It's more geared towards trying to figure out how to get them back down to a couple hours.
Yeah. Well, again, I'm, I'm effective, not efficient. I, I go along with that, but I think again, from my experience, if, if there's a problem with special education, the board can certainly be aware of it because it's been watching the board's attention. But the board's role would be to say to superintendent, there's a concern being brought up about, about special education. And here are the concerns. Is your team aware of it? Is your team working on it? And can your team provide some kind of, uh, presentation to the board so we more fully understand what, what the administration is seeing around special education? And then the board can certainly say, we like, here, we hear concerns about this, this, and this. Can, can, and we direct the superintendent to go back to his team and develop a plan that addresses these issues with special education and report back to the board about what the team is doing and the progress it's seeing. So the board's always performing, you're in the balcony looking at oversight, you're developing a plan to improve special education for the district, the superintendent's. Again, but that sets the minutes. And before my, I guess, retired superintendent.
I want to do a reality check.
Yeah.
So I, I think we've captured language for all five of these goals. I will rework them and get them to Dr. Gregory, to Jen tomorrow. Point you to the morning, I guess, as soon as I get back in the office. Which will, I think, satisfy not only the intent of what the citizens are looking for, but helping you be much better positioned to move forward. Um, we can align with some of the information on the public, both the survey and the, uh, community forums to talk to our advisor or communications person at our next meeting. Just have a little guidance from him on how that can become more effective. He's really good at that kind of stuff. In the meantime, Jody will be working on a variety of areas in terms of bylaws, um, policies, fin- he'll be working with Ed Arum on the financial part of it, which I think will eventually be worked on with Jody. I think the two of you are talking about getting together and going through some.
Share models with, with, um, superintendent tomorrow. And we'll, we'll also schedule a meeting where we can talk specifically about, um, policy there to find you.
So, um, we have two options for right now. Um, originally I figured this would take a couple hours and we, we're pretty good. Um, for the last hour, um, have any of you heard of a guy named Simon Sinek? Simon Sinek, um, he, he, he's really big on how successful organizations focus on why they exist rather than what they do. It's an eight-minute video, which we're prepared to show you, and then we can talk about that with the idea of, can we come up with what is the why of the bridge for homeschoolers? Because if there's that conversation, it might go a little longer. So I'm throwing it up to you as, do you want to try to do it tonight or do you want to maybe shove that for another time? If, if just to work the extra hour or, um, have a little extra time.
I know they've been out all day.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, you were in Harvard all day too.
Um, but I don't care. I wanted to.
I love what I'm doing.
It's a good video. Well, I'll tell you what, why not, we, let's not go with the idea we're going to come up with the why tonight, but let's watch the video and then talk a little bit about.
We're here.
It's a good video. So, um.
Maybe after this, after they come back. Oh, we got, maybe it says to this after the meeting as well.
We could pop it.
Can we, you get it.
It's always bad.
That's all we want you to get ourselves.
Yeah, it's a, it's a Ted Talk.
Yes.
Exactly. We're, we're, we've, um, connected through Ted on, online, because I forgot my last pop, which I had the video on. But we can get you the link.
Or better, how do you explain when others are able to achieve things that seem to defy all of the assumptions? For example, why is Apple so innovative? Year after year after year after year, they're more innovative than all their competition. And yet they're just a computer company. They're just like everyone else. They have the same access to the same talent, the same agencies, the same consultants, the same media. Then why is it that they seem to have something different? Why is it that Martin Luther King led the civil rights movement? He wasn't the only man who suffered in a pre-civil rights America, and he certainly wasn't the only great orator of the day. Why him? And why is it that the Wright brothers were able to figure out controlled powered man flight? When there were certainly other teams who were better qualified, better funded? And they didn't achieve powered man flight and the Wright brothers beat them to it. There's something else at play here. About three and a half years ago, I made a discovery. And this discovery profoundly changed my view on how I thought the world worked, and it even profoundly changed the way in which I operate in it. As it turns out, there's a pattern. As it turns out, all the great and inspiring leaders and organizations in the world, whether it's Apple or Martin Luther King or the Wright brothers, they all think, act, and communicate the exact same way. And it's the complete opposite to everyone else. All I did was codify it. And it's probably the world's simplest idea. I call it the golden circle. Why, how, what? This little idea explains why some organizations and some leaders are able to inspire where others aren't. Let me define the terms really quickly. Every single person, every single organization on the planet knows what they do, one hundred percent. Some know how they do it, whether you call it your differentiating value proposition or your proprietary process or your USP. But very, very few people or organizations know why they do what they do. And by why, I don't mean to make a profit. That's a result. It's always a result. By why, I mean, what's your purpose? What's your cause? What's your belief? Why does your organization exist? Why do you get out of bed in the morning? And why should anyone care? Well, as a result, the way we think, the way we act, the way we communicate is from the outside in. It's obvious. We go from the clearest thing to the fuzziest thing. But the inspired leaders and the inspire, inspired organizations, regardless of their size, regardless of their industry, all think, act, and communicate from the inside out. Let me give you an example. I use Apple because they're easy to understand and everybody gets it. If Apple were like everyone else, a marketing message from them might sound like this. We make great computers. They're beautifully designed, simple to use, and user-friendly. Want to buy one? Meh. And that's how most of us communicate. That's how most marketing is done. That's how most sales is done. And that's how most of us communicate interpersonally. We say what we do, we say how we're different or how we better, and we expect some sort of behavior, a purchase, a vote, something like that. Here's our new law firm. Uh, we have the best lawyers with the biggest clients. We have, you know, we always perform for our clients, do business with us. Here's our new car. It gets great gas mileage. It has, you know, leather seats. Buy our car. But it's uninspiring. Here's how Apple actually communicates. Everything we do, we believe in challenging the status quo. We believe in thinking differently. The way we challenge the status quo is by making our products beautifully designed, simple to use, and user-friendly. We just happen to make great computers. Want to buy one? Totally different, right? You ready to buy a computer from me? All I did was reverse the order of the information. What it proves to us is that people don't buy what you do, people buy why you do it. People don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. This explains why every single person in this room is perfectly comfortable buying a computer from Apple. But we're also perfectly comfortable buying an MP3 player from Apple or a phone from Apple or a DVR from Apple. But as I said before, Apple's just a computer company. There's nothing that distinguishes them structurally from any of their competitors. Their competitors are all equally qualified to make all of these products. In fact, they tried. A few years ago, Gateway came out with flat screen TVs. They're eminently qualified to make flat screen TVs. They've been making flat screen monitors for years. Nobody bought one. And Dell. Dell came out with MP3 players and PDAs. And they make great quality products and they can make perfectly well-designed products. And nobody bought one. In fact, talking about it now, we can't even imagine buying an MP3 player from Dell. Why would you buy an MP3 player from a computer company? But we do it every day. People don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. The goal is not to do business with anybody, with everybody who needs what you have. The goal is to do business with people who believe what you believe. Here's the best part. None of what I'm telling you is my opinion. It's all grounded in the tenants of biology, not psychology, biology. If you look at a cross section of the human brain, looking from the top down, what you see is the human brain is actually broken into three major components that correlate perfectly with the golden circle. Our newest brain, our homo sapien brain, our neocortex corresponds with the what level. The neocortex is responsible for all of our rational and analytical thought and language. The middle two sections make up our limbic brains. And our limbic brains are responsible for all of our feelings, like trust and loyalty. It's also responsible for all human behavior, all decision-making, and it has no capacity for language. In other words, when we communicate from the outside in, yes, people can understand vast amounts of complicated information, like features and benefits and facts and figures. It just doesn't drive behavior. When we communicate from the inside out, we're talking directly to the part of the brain that controls behavior, and then we allow people to rationalize it with the tangible things we say and do. This is where gut decisions come from. You know, sometimes you can give somebody all the facts and your figures and he's, I know what all the facts and details say, but it just doesn't feel right. Why would we use that verb? It doesn't feel right. Because the part of the brain that controls decision-making doesn't control language. And the best we can muster up is, I don't know, it just doesn't feel right. Or sometimes you say you're leading with your heart or you're leading with your soul. Well, I hate to break it to you, there's own other body parts controlling your behavior. It's all happening here in your limbic brain, the part of the brain that controls decision-making and not language. But if you don't know why you do what you do, and people respond to why you do what you do, then how will anybody? How will you ever get people to, 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 to vote for you or buy something from you, or more importantly, be loyal? And want to be a part of what it is that you do. Again, the goal is not just to sell people who need what you have. The goal is to sell to people who believe what you believe. The goal is not just to hire people who need a job. It's to hire people who believe what you believe. I always say that, you know, there's, uh, if you, if you, if you um, hire people just because they can do a job, they'll work for your money. But if you hire people who believe what you believe, they work for you with blood and sweat and tears. And nowhere, nowhere else is there a better example of this than with the Wright brothers. Most people don't know about Samuel Pierpont Langley. And back in the early 20th century, the pursuit of powered man flight was like the dot com of the day. Everybody was trying it. And Samuel Pierpont Langley had what we assume to be the recipe for success. I mean, even now, when you ask people, why did your product or why did your company fail? And people always give you the same permutation of the same three things. Undercapitalized, the wrong people, bad market conditions. It's always the same three things. So let's explore that. Samuel Pierpont Langley was given $50,000 by the War Department to figure out this flying machine. Money was no problem. He held a seat at Harvard and worked at the Smithsonian and was extremely well-connected. He knew all the big minds of the day. He hired the best minds money could find, and the market conditions were fantastic. The New York Times followed him around everywhere and everyone was rooting for Langley. And how come we've never heard of Samuel Pierpont Langley? A few hundred miles away in Dayton, Ohio, Orville and Wilbur Wright. They had none of what we consider to be the recipe for success. They had no money. They paid for their dream with the proceeds from their bicycle shop. Not a single person on the Wright brothers' team had a college education, not even Orville or Wilbur. And the New York Times followed them around nowhere. The difference was, Orville and Wilbur were driven by a cause, by a purpose, by a belief. They believed that if they could figure out this flying machine, it'll change the course of the world. Samuel Pierpont Langley was different. He wanted to be rich and he wanted to be famous. He was in pursuit of the result. He was in pursuit of the riches. And lo and behold, look what happened. The people who believed in the Wright brothers' dream worked with them with, with blood and sweat and tears. The others just worked for the paycheck. And they tell stories of how every time the Wright brothers went out, they would have to take five sets of parts because that's how many times they would crash before they came in for supper. And eventually on December 17th, 1903, the Wright brothers took flight. And no one was there to even experience it. We found out about it a few days later. And further proof that Langley was motivated by the wrong thing, the day the Wright brothers took flight, he quit. He could have said, that's an amazing discovery, guys, and I will improve upon your technology. But he didn't. He wasn't first. He didn't get rich. He didn't get famous. So he quit. People don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. And if you talk about what you believe, you will attract those who believe what you believe. Well, why is it important to attract those who believe what you believe? Something called the law of diffusion of innovation. And if you don't know the law, you definitely know the terminology. The first two and a half percent of our population are our innovators. The next 13 and a half percent of our population are our early adopters. The next 34% are your early majority, your late majority, and your laggards. The only reason these people buy touch tone phones is because you can't buy rotary phones anymore. We all sit at various places at various times on the scale, but what the law of diffusion of innovation tells us is that if you want mass market success or mass market acceptance of an idea, you cannot have it until you achieve this tipping point between 15 and 18% market penetration. And then the system tips. And I love asking businesses, what's your conversion on new business? And they love to tell you, oh, it's about 10% proudly. Well, you can trip over 10% of the customers. We all have about 10% who just get it. That's how we describe them, right? That's like that gut feeling. Oh, they just get it. The problem is how do you find the ones that just get it before you're doing business with them versus the ones who don't get it? So it's this here, this little gap that you have to close, as Jeffrey Moore calls it, crossing the chasm. Because you see, the early majority will not try something until someone else has tried it first. And these guys, the innovators and the early adopters, they're comfortable making those gut decisions. They're more comfortable making those intuitive decisions that are driven by what they believe about the world. And not just what product is available. These are the people who stood online for six hours to buy an iPhone when they first came out, when you could have just walked into the store the next week and bought one off the shelf. These are the people who spent $40,000 on flat screen TVs when they first came out, even though the technology was substandard. And by the way, they didn't do it because the technology was so great. They did it for themselves. It's because they wanted to be first. People don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. And what you do simply proves what you believe. In fact, people will do the things that prove what they believe. The reason that person bought the iPhone on the first, in the first six hours, or stood in, in line for six hours was because of what they believed about the world and how they wanted everybody to see them. They were first. People don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. So let me give you a famous example, a famous failure and a famous success of the law of diffusion of innovation. First, the famous failure. It's a commercial example. As we said before a second ago, the recipe for success is money and the right people and the right market conditions, right? You should have success then. Look at TiVo. From the time TiVo came out about eight or nine years ago to this current day, they are the single highest quality product on the market. Hands down, there is no dispute. They were extremely well-funded. Market conditions were fantastic. I mean, we use TiVo as a verb. I TiVo stuff on my piece of junk Time Warner DVR all the time. But TiVo is a commercial failure. They've never made money. And when they went IPO, their stock was at about 30 or 40 dollars and then plummeted, and it's never traded above 10. In fact, I don't think, because it's even traded above six, except for a couple of little spikes. Because you see, when TiVo launched their product, they told us all what they had. They said, we have a product that pauses live TV, skips commercials, rewinds live TV, and memorizes your viewing habits without you even asking. And the cynical majority said, we don't believe you. We don't need it. We don't like it. You're scaring us. What if they had said, if you're the kind of person who likes to have total control over every aspect of your life? Boy, do we have a product for you. It pauses live TV, skips commercials, memorizes your viewing habits, et cetera, et cetera. People don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. And what you do simply serves as the proof of what you believe. Now let me give you a successful example of the law of diffusion of innovation. In the summer of 1963, 250,000 people showed up on the Mall in Washington to hear Dr. King speak. They sent out no invitations. And there was no website to check the date. How do you do that? Well, Dr. King wasn't the only man in America who was the, who was a great orator. He wasn't the only man in America who suffered in a pre-civil rights America. In fact, some of his ideas were bad. But he had a gift. He didn't go around telling people what needed to change in America. He, he went around and told people what he believed. I believe, I believe, I believe, he told people. And people who believed what he believed took his cause and they made it their own, and they told people. And some of those people uh, created structures to get the word out to even more people. And lo and behold, 250,000 people showed up on the right day, on the right time to hear him speak. How many of them showed up for him? Zero. They showed up for themselves. It's what they believed about America that got them to travel on a bus for eight hours to stand in the sun in Washington for, in the middle of August. It's what they believed, and it wasn't about black versus white. 25% of the audience was white. Dr. King believed that there were two types of laws in this world. Those that are made by a higher authority, authority, and those that are made by man. And not until all the laws that are made by man are consistent with the laws that are made by the higher authority, will we live in a just world. It just so happens that the civil rights movement was the perfect thing to help him bring his cause to life. We followed not him, not for him, but for ourselves. And by the way, he gave the I have a dream speech, not the I have a plan speech. Listen to politicians now with their comprehensive 12-point plans. They're not inspiring anybody. Because there were leaders and there are those who lead. Leaders hold a position of power or authority, but those who lead inspire us. Whether they're individuals or organizations, we follow those who lead, not because we have to, but because we want to. We follow those who lead, not for them, but for ourselves. And it's those who start with why that have the ability to inspire those around them or find others who inspire them.
Okay.
Observating. I believe.
Again, what I want to think about for next time, because we're going to be stretching for time, I think. Um, but the idea of this board of education coming up, why Bridgeport Public Schools? What is your why? Why does this system exist? And be thinking about that, because at some point, especially if you're going into a vision, you're going to be talking about establishing your district vision. Depending whatever you end up doing, um, if the more focused you are, what that, what your purpose is, and, and the exercise of coming up with nine people to read to something, wouldn't have tried this with you six months ago. Um, I'm not sure you were ready. I think you might be ready now. I think you're talking to each other better. You're listening to each other better. I think you have a more, a greater sense of purpose, and that's what this is all about, how we have a purpose. Did you have a?
Yeah. He says something very important. I believe, but you, 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 he was young, where he said, the people that don't come for him. Right? People that don't come for him, they go because they believe of itself. And us, if we, if, um, if, um, like right now, we give the message to the parents, community, you know, believe they will come, they don't come for us. They don't come because we're leaders. You know, they come because they believe, you know, what we're going to do. So that message is very, very, that part for me, you know, hit me very strong there.
And a lot of that, and it's, that's an excellent thing to talk about. Hopefully we'll cover some of that in our next, well, we talked about communication. And the idea is because it's, you have to establish that vision, you have to establish that why, but then you have to figure out how to communicate it so everybody else buys into it. You know, if Apple sat there and said, we believe in, you know, breaking molds and, and being unique and all those other things, but then they didn't get up and let people know what their message was, they would never solve the computer. So I mean, it's, it's a little bit of a boat, but it starts with that. I've worked with some boards to come up with something really intriguing, why's? In one case, it took them an hour and a half to come up with it, which is why I don't want to start it tonight. Because we'll all be getting more tired of it. But thinking about it, because I think at some point soon, that would be a really good way of you continuing your, continuing your progress from managing a district to leading a district. I think a lot of it starts with, what do you believe? You know, why, why do you sit at this table? What, what's driving you? But we can't have nine individuals doing nine different things and expect everybody to buy into what the board's doing. So come up with a common denominator. What is something that you all believe in? And what's that why? And Mr. Traver, it looks like your hand is up. And you're muted.
I hear you, sir.
I will not try and continue that discussion tonight. I will simply end on a fun historical note. The first in-flight was from Bridgeport. His name was Gustav Whitehead. He is buried in Lakeside Cemetery across from Harding High School.
And chair.
And his headstone was given by the Connecticut Aeronautical Engineers Society uh, in recognition of his achievement. This is a source of great pride to those of us in Connecticut and Bridgeport. Um, so just a minor historical point that we can then build on here.
That's awesome. Thank you for reminding us of that. That's excellent.
Um, so we'll have the bigger discussion at the next meeting.
I'd also point out, I don't know, but where he said on that certain date when they had the first powered man flight, I don't know if you heard the background sound. They must have been at an airport or near. Flying over right at the right moment.
Yes.
And I'd also plead guilty to owning a Dell PDA back when they first came out. They were actually 10 times better than any other PDA, including the uh, but unfortunately, they didn't sell enough of them to make it one. I still have mine in the box somewhere, but it doesn't work.
I'm with you, I'm with you on the, I'm with you on the Dell.
That, that little accent.
No, no, I'm sorry. I went with Gateway back in those days.
Same, same concept though.
Yes.
Right. Anybody want to say anything for the good of the order, or shall we all start packing up?
Back up.
You did a lot of good work tonight.
There's a vote into a jury.
So moved.
All right, that's three more journeys.
See y'all. Better.